And there's a lot going on on the property. It's an old property, bark. And essentially, the clients want to clean up the lots, put all the barns and on the lot with two thirteen Vineyard Avenue and just leave the one sand alone, two-story house on two fifteen Vineyard Avenue. Because right now, you know, the lot line is going through the existing garage, very close to the pool. So they just want to clean it up to make it kind of more user friendly.
Okay, Dave, do you want to speak to it?
Sure, I sent the email around earlier on this. Just to give the board some clarity, ninety dash three D says that every lot that's created must have frontage on an approved official road. This is similar to what New York State law requires and the state offers town boards the possibility of an open development area. In my opinion, that would not be required here because the same little later in our subdivision standards suggests that the planning board may modify, I'm gonna read it right to you. The planning board may modify the requirements of this chapter in an individual case with the, in the board's judgment. Such modification is in the public interest. And in my opinion, as the gentleman just said, this is now creating two more conforming lots than the vastly non-conforming lot that exists now. This is actually an improvement to this arrangement out on the property. So it would be my advice, suggestion to make, to allow that modification from the law.
Andy?
Well, we have a lot of questions about easements and access to lot one in particular. There's a water line that crosses through lot two. It would need at least a utility easement granted in favor of lot one. Question, I'm curious how lot one is accessed now, if it's, if it's through the right of way to the north or if it's through the farm property to the south and which one would be utilized? Okay, so then, you know, whichever way. If that's the way it should be, if it's gonna be, you know, we would, I guess I would recommend an access even through the farm. I see that there's a center line right of way. Is that an access, is that the existing access?
That's the existing, yeah, through lot two as it exists now.
Okay. So can we, can we extend that to lot one?
Yeah, we could certainly do that.
Okay.
I think his main goal was to use the existing fifty foot easement on the other side.
Yeah, okay, well, I mean.
Whatever the board recommends.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's up to the board. I mean, it depends what they're willing to allow. We'd also need to see where the septic, septic is located for lot one to make sure that that's, we want to make sure that's on the lot. Those are pretty much our major comments.
Anything from the board? Fred?
Just from a quick perspective, how far, we're out by the nursing homes?
Yeah. Anyone else on the board? Nobody? Gotcha, I know where we are. Nothing? Gotcha, I know where we are. Nothing? So I guess you have a little bit of homework, updating your map a little bit and no other questions, nothing else?
We have a letter, but I mean, that, this is.
Marking up the septic stuff.
What about the wells?
There's water, there's water out there.
There's water and gas out there.
Was there a comment letter? I never saw one.
We have one. I don't think we ever issued it, so we'll get it.
Okay. Okay, so we can take care of those items, which actually are not a lot and we submit.
Yes.
A public hearing be held next time or we gotta need another one?
We could open it for a public hearing next month. You guys good with that?
I don't see why not.
Okay, let's do that. What, I don't know, what's the date, Dave? All righty, thank you very much. Next is on the agenda, your, our public hearings, we have the villages PRRD. Public hearing scheduled for August twenty second, twenty twenty four, which is today. Well, let's go on. We're gonna let you speak to it and then we'll open the public hearing.
My name is John First. I'm the attorney at Catania, man and writer for the applicant. With me is Kelly Leibert of KRC Planning and Consulting. Just for purposes of the public, give everybody an update of where we've been, where we're at. Just quickly, so if you all recall last August twenty twenty three, the planning board issued a resolution of approval for the overall site plan for the PRRD. It also included a resolution of approval for phase A. If remember, we broke it down into phases A through F. We're here right now for the public hearing on phases B through F. And in essence, some of the things we'd like to do is to have the ability to have the site plan signed. Once ministerial and non-discretionary items are taken care of. I think before it was a little unclear with the last resolution in August twenty twenty three. So I think we've kind of hopefully clarified that situation where the site plans are able to be signed. Of course, any construction or development will be subject to the conditions before signing those site plans as well as, you know, making sure the infrastructure is maintained and, and all the necessary infrastructure is installed as appropriate. And essentially, just so it's, everybody understands that the actual site plans for phases B through F, nothing's changed. It's exactly the same that you guys had reviewed and the public had saw back in twenty twenty three. There are some more details, you know, one of the reasons why we structured it the way we did is because it was, you know, there was a lot of information, so we tried to break it down. So now that you have the detailed information on phases B through F, you know, we're hoping to get the additional resolution of approval for that. And I believe your engineers have already started reviewing those plans and had some technical comments. My understanding is the only change were very minor changes with respect to the stormwater. So the idea is that the site worked last year and it works now as we got, as we dug into the weeds with each individual phase. Some of the other things, just to kind of stress, I know there's some improvements on Apple Lane that, you know, the, my client has, is ready, willing and able to do once their resolution is hopefully finalized. In addition to that, there's the traffic light, which, you know, he is, obviously that behooves him to install that traffic light sooner rather than later. Unfortunately, the situation right now is traffic light's very expensive and he can't, you know, it's just something that can't be funded without a lender, without that money. There's no traffic light, without the traffic light, there's no COs. So it's important that we have the ability to have these site plans signed sooner rather than later so that it helps with the lending institutions. In addition, it's important to have the ability to have a hundred and fifteen COs eligible. Again, without this funding from the lender, he's not gonna be able to construct the traffic light on his own. A lot of the work that he's done has been pretty much out of his own pocket and now it's time to get some lenders involved so that he can finish the project and move it forward. Other than that, I think, oh, the other, one of the other items we were hoping to address was the hours of operation. I know in the prior resolution, it did say weekdays, seven through five o'clock. We were hoping to have that changed slightly. We do have some deadlines. I think the idea is to get the Apple Lane improvements done by October thirty first. The other goal is to get the traffic light up and running by September of next year. So we would like some flexibility to have some limited hours on Saturdays. Maybe eight to three on Saturdays, given our time constraints. The code, the noise, the noise code does allow for work on Saturdays and Sundays, actually. And it actually allows work up until, I think, eight o'clock at night. So we would still be less than what, much less than what the code permits. And so we were hoping the board would consider a slight change in the hours of operation on Saturdays from eight to three. Again, to help the project move along. It's actually an item that neither Kelly and I noticed in the original resolution from last year. And I think actually the site has, has been working on Saturdays again because we weren't even aware of it. So we apologize, but I don't think there's been any complaints. So it hasn't been an issue and we don't think it'll be an issue moving forward. Other than that, that's really it. I mean, you guys are very familiar with the project. We've been before this board off and on for the last four years. We took a big step last August and now we're just looking for some modifications to help to move the project towards the construction stage.
John, do you have an estimate from your client what the cost of the light is roughly?
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Two, five, four?
What's left?
It's around five.
Does staff have anything to add to this? Paul? Dave?
I just have one sort of clarification, modification. I would be, you know, I think I'd be okay with the Saturday hours with the caveat that no holidays.
And no turning up on the hill to get out of the property?
We can sort of, when we unpack, when the board unpacks that, we can, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so one of the other issues, you want to do it now? Okay, so one of the other issues that the board is concerned about is construction traffic into the site prior to the light going up, actually even after that, I suppose. Kelly, you recall when we first started, we limited commercial traffic through Mayor Drive and the Hudson Hills Development. Yeah, we, we'd like very much so to make that continue, no commercial traffic. You know, the long way through Mayor Drive.
So just so I'm clear, when we, there was some issues with vehicles traveling past the entrance drive, which we call Healthcare Center Lane on Mayor Drive. And we went up and installed signage that said no construction traffic past this point. Are we talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So re-instituting that same process, understood.
Extending that through.
Understood, okay.
And just it was a concern because, you know, we're bringing up the light. Obviously, having a construction traffic coming off of nine onto Mayor Drive up until Healthcare Lane, it's gonna be a, an issue when they're coming back out of there because they may want to go north. So then they're gonna have to turn around someplace in order to go north if they're headed south, since that's the only way out. So bringing this part of the conversation up, this is where most of our concerns were about the light, trying to get the light in sooner.
Understood.
Than the year, if it can be. You know, with a lender just at the doorstep of the applicant and maybe getting closer to having that happen, you know, is there any way that we can consider that is one of our concerns? The whole board, we've talked about it, we've, we just have this major concern worrying about construction traffic making a left-hand churn.
Out.
Out of the, out of the site. So health and welfare to the community is definitely priority number one in our eyes.
I think that the owner is equally interested in trying to get this traffic signal completed.
Right.
You know, I think that he wants to alleviate all the concerns as well, but it's a, it will be a timing issue as we get closer to winter.
Yes. That's, and we've all considered that too. So we, we realize what you're up against, especially trying to get lenders in line. It'll put us into the non-working time, you know, from November to March, remember? The DOT cutoff, the non-working time.
Generally, November fourteenth, but again, plus or minus with weather.
Right, right. So with that being said, is there anything else you want to discuss? Anybody from the board, anything else to discuss? No? Yeah, we're all good, we're good. All right, can I have a motion open, you, you guys are set too, right? Can I have a motion open a public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Public hearing's open. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on behalf or against the project? Please come up, state your name. Anybody in Zoom land? Nothing?
There you go.
All right. Are you gonna speak on behalf or against the project? Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll ask a question if I can.
Sure you can. What's your name, sir?
Okay, my name's Terrence Wilson. I live on Soft Drive in Highland Hill or Hudson Hills community.
Thank you.
I just a, a question. I think it's probably a question a lot of people are wondering, does approval of phases B through F, is it contingent upon phase A being completed or would that allow the other phases to proceed regardless of phase A?
So there's no restriction on moving forward with any of the other phases except the site work that's required for some of the other phases. So for example, we couldn't start in phase D immediately because there's some movement of material that has to occur, which are outlined on the phasing plans and the grading plans. So sequentially, the limitations is on the site work. There are stormwater restrictions as far as the amount of acreage that can be exposed at any one time. So that's also another under. Um, so that's also another underlying restriction that allows the developer to move, you know, from place to place or restricts the developer from being able to move from place to place.
Right, and we also had added a note to all the plans that says that the infrastructure, the necessary infrastructure has to be in place. Before we move on and 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 try to develop a pad site. So that way the proper utilities are in the proper roads, curvings, lighting, everything else to make it safe enough for the building inspector. To feel comfortable so that he or she can issue a a certificate of occupancy. So that way, um, you know, it will be, the, it's gonna be dictated by the construction, the market demands, but also really the construction limitations.
Scott?
Yes.
May I add to that?
Yes.
Just um, just uh, just so you know, from the planning board's uh very strong advocacy. Uh, what the will occur is essentially you're gonna have complete neighborhoods. That in in terms of your infrastructure that needs to be installed. Before they can get certificates of occupancy for any of the cottages. So they're gonna have an incentive. To do that right and to do it in a way as Kelly was suggesting that makes sense. Uh, you know, logistically. Um, but but ultimately, you're gonna end up with complete neighborhoods and the only thing that won't be installed. Until the final certificate of occupancy is issued is the landscaping and that will be subject to. Uh, the direction of the building department um and coordination with the uh the. Installation of the cottages.
Yeah, predominantly the street trees that are along the sidewalk. So you have curb, street trees, sidewalk, and so those street trees will not be installed. Mostly because construction has to occur back and forth in front of that cottage, that structure. And so those trees would be installed afterward, um after each house is completed with the coordination with the building.
So this was essentially a balance between the flexibility that the developer wanted in order to be able to. Uh, market the cottages more broadly. But then also to make sure that, as the planning board has insisted. That uh the community that's being built uh is assured. You know, that you have your neighborhoods as you go.
And I think that uh just to take it one step further, the thought process is that by phase. Um, you don't want to have a single house without sidewalks and you want to have lighting and so forth. So that first resident has sidewalks and lighting and so forth and they can walk. You know, in within that phase. And so that phase will be complete with all of those safety amenities, lighting, landscaping with, but notwithstanding the trees.
Um, yeah.
Water, sewer, storm, uh curbs, paving. So it'll be a complete phase when that first CO is issued.
Okay. Anyone else?
And uh, sorry, I just a quick follow-up. Um. Is the nursing home or assisted living facilities, that's still part of like a phase one issue or what, where is that in the uh plan?
Yes, so the nursing home, just I don't know if I provided an update last week to the board, but. Uh, the nursing home and the application was submitted a while back to the Department of Health. Um, I've been speak, I spoke with Ron DeVito, who is the attorney that's helping. The applicant here with the Department of Health application. And he believes that we should have our license within about six months, give or take a month. Um, there's really just one more document. There's a, it's it's an information technology. Proposal report and it kind of covers, you know, all the emergency technology within each unit. Where it's gonna be on the residents and how they interact. Um, that's the last remaining item that needs to be reviewed by the Department of Health that needs to be um submitted. By us and reviewed by the Department of Health. Obviously, there's gonna be a couple of rounds of comments, so that's why we're anticipating six months before we get, obtain the license. Okay, anyone else in Zoom land? Any comments? None, Dave? Anyone else? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Public hearing's closed. Could you start with our draft resolution if you don't mind?
Sure. Um, I'll I'll, it's pretty long. At this point, we're up to uh twelve, twelve pages, so.
Be it further resolved?
Well, I just to give you some color, I should probably, you know, provide some of the background, but I'll do it in a summary fashion.
Yes.
Uh, the whereas clauses. Um, as John indicated, this is a planned residential uh retirement development. It was uh approved by the town board. Uh, the planning board con- conducted a comprehensive secret review. Of the potential environmental impacts and issued a negative declaration. Twenty twen- August of twenty three, twenty twenty-three, the planning board issued an overall site plan approval for the PRRD. And uh, all of those plans are uh essentially what you uh have in front of you now. Uh, they were reviewed by your engineer then. Basically, as they review the phases, they're really just looking at the technical details, making sure that they're consistent with the original plans. Not to give your review short shrift and. So uh, this was sent to the Ulster County Planning Board. That's one of the requirements under the law. County had some comments. Those comments are incorporated into conditions that are part of the resolution, both the original resolution and this one. Seven phases for the project, uh A through F, and then there's C one and C two. The. As John uh first indicated, the applicant maintains it's made substantial progress in its application to the Department of Health. And it is continuing to make all reasonable efforts to obtain that uh timely decision on the application. The applicant complied with all of the conditions of the original approval. So Scott was in in a position where he was able to sign uh those site plans. A lot of construction has occurred. Um, the applicant has indicated that that was all uh from their own pocket. And and they basically, just as an overview, got to a point where they need uh financing for the project. Uh, which prompted uh the return to the planning board and the request for additional flexibility. Uh, having the site plan signed. Uh, so that the lending institutions would feel more comfortable that there aren't. A lot of additional reviews by the planning board. Um, and and other discretionary approvals that they need to get. So uh. We have, you have in front of you all of the uh phases at this point. Uh, we we, the board has discussed sort of this new approach. That the applicant ha- is proposing in order to be able to obtain the financing. We've worked out a process and come up with conditions, we believe. That will uh meet the planning board's goals of still assuring that the public's health and safety are protected. Um, and that the project happens uh in a way that makes sense and protects. Even the interests of the people who are gonna be living in the cottages so that they have their own, that they have full neighborhoods when they move in. And so that's uh had the hearing at this point and and so I'll move into the now therefore. Provisions based on the original site plan approval and approved site plans and pursuant to the zoning code and New York State Town Law. The planning board hereby grants conditional site plan approval for phases B through F of the PRRD. And the chair is conditionally authorized to sign the plans. Um, the plans, there's a extensive list of the plans that are involved here. There's one, two, three. Four. Five pages of plans, all broken up by phase. Um, and then the applicant needs to meet the following conditions prior to the signature of the planning board chairman on the plans. This contemplates that the applicant could come in for uh one phase at a time, two phases at a time. But, you know, they can get all of the site plans signed. And the, what they need to do before that can occur, they have to pay outstanding invoices from, for the escrow. The. Code officer and the uh town engineer need to approve the Apple Lane remediation. Uh, there's a note that's gonna be added to each of the plans that says. Except for the three model college cottages located in phase A. Issuance of the first CO requested for a cottage will be granted after the utility infrastructure. Water, sewer, stormwater, as well as the roads, sidewalks, curving and lighting are installed for such phase. The installation of landscaping will be installed at the CEO's discretion during review of each individual CO. So that ensures that uh the neighborhoods will come uh before any certificates of occupancy are allowed. You also, before the signing of the site plans, need proof of satisfaction of any technical comments from the town engineer. And submission of uh written program for the maintenance of all the buildings and lands. Within the PRRD, including the open space and recreation areas, landscaping. Walkways, driveways, parking areas and other common utilities and facilities. This has to actually be approved by the town board, so the town board will approve it and then you'll have proof of that. Um, that that satisfies that condition. The submission of an energy conservation plan. This is something that the Ulster County Planning Board had sought. And so that's something that needs to be provided by the applicant to the planning board. And after the satisfaction of those conditions, the last thing that the applicant needs to. Do before uh the chairman can sign the site plans for, you know, whichever phase we're talking about. Is to pay the recreation fees for that phase. And so, um, you know, and I broke out in here the different uh amounts that need to be paid by phase. Uh, then be it further resolved, and this follows from the original approval. They have three models that um will be constructed and and uh on the site. Um, those three models can uh have already been approved for construction. I'm not sure, has the building permit been issued for those, Dave? Yeah, they already have the building permit even for those. So that's already, so those will be up so that they can market the PRRD to potential customers. And then be it further resolved that the undertaking of the PRD shall be subject to the following ongoing condition. The applicant needs to uh start the approved remediation for Apple Lane as soon as possible. And complete it by no later than October thirty first, twenty twenty-four. The installation and New York State DOT of of oper- approved operation. Of the traffic signal at the intersection of New York State nine W and Meyer Drive shall be completed by the applicant. Again, as soon as possible, but within twelve months of the effective date of this resolution. Or prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy for a cottage in the PRRD. So that means that, and and, you know, I think as we've discussed, there's a lot of incentives for them to. Get that traffic light in, including construction, traffic, safety. But there's a hard deadline, twelve months from whenever you approve this resolution. Uh, that that would need to be installed. Unless there is, uh, they want to get a certificate of occupancy for the cottages, any of the cottages. In which case they need to have that light installed before that can be obtained. The cottages are how one of the big ways this project will be. Uh, you know, financially profitable for the applicant, so they have a a substantial incentive. In order to get that traffic light in. And you have the backstop of a twelve-month period which the town could enforce if necessary. No certificate of occupancy for any cottage shall be issued by the code officer prior to providing the applicant. Proof satisfactory to the town engineer that the upgrades to the Vineyard Avenue pump station have been completed. It, you, you can't serve the property properly with sewer until those. Uh, water.
It's a water.
Sorry. Can't get water supply until that that is installed. Thank you. The applicant shall continue to make all reasonable efforts to provide uh New York State Department of Health requested information. To that agency, would have its applications for a license for the PRRD's assisted living facility. And to obtain a determination from New York State DOH um on its uh ALF app- application. As uh was discussed, um, all construction traffic would need to enter and exit onto Route nine W and not go up through the Hudson Hills property. No, and this is an important one, and this goes back to the original approval from from the planning board's perspective. You know, this is a PRRD that has been approved. And a PRRD can be a combination of individual uh residential units. And an assisted living facility as proposed. Unless you have both, you don't have a PRRD. And uh, the underlying zoning or the the PRRD district that was established by the town board. Um, may need to be amended. The town board may elect to do that. So no building permit. Shall be issued by the code officer for any cottage cottages in phases E or F. And that's, uh, I believe that's eighty-two cottages. Is that right? Twenty-seven? Yep, eighty-two cottages until uh a certificate. Of occupancy has been issued for the DOH. By DOH for the assisted living facility and proof of construction of the DOT approved sidewalks. Along New York State nine W is provided to the code officer. Be it further resolved that this approval is limited. To the applicant's proposal for the assisted living facility and cottages and any deviation. Uh, may require an amendment to the PRRD as determined by the town board. And or an amendment to the site plan approval as determined by the planning board. Uh, be it further resolved that construction of the project may be undertaken on weekdays between seven AM and five PM. Um, and and if the board wishes, we can add the eight to three on Saturdays for that. You you can talk about that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then uh, there's a requirement, again, from the Ulster County Planning Board. That the applicant uh continue to to try and see about providing mass transit. From the PRRD. Um, and they'll be working with the Ulster County area transit on that. That's continuing obligation. Stormwater prevention, pollution prevention plan. Uh, needs to provide provision for onsite monitoring by the town during construction. And then you have the the normal uh boilerplate provisions about uh the effective date. The effective date of the resolution would be tonight if you all approved it. And and that's what what you have in front of you.
So does the board feel um. Accepting to the idea of having to be able to work on Saturdays within the hours? accepting to the idea of having to be able to work on Saturdays within the hours? Would you say it was seven to three? Eight to three? How do you feel?
I don't problem with it. I'm okay.
How much of a difference is this going to make in the project to have that extra day?
Saturdays? So would you calculate, how many days?
Assuming a full year, it's 17% of a work year for contractors. I mean, I know there's a lot of contractors on this board and it's very customary, really in the construction world, to be working on Saturdays. And so you also have to factor in that we have winter conditions. So it really does make a difference to get those Saturdays in the construction schedule.
I know it certainly did before COVID, that's for sure. So, you know, Saturdays were.
Work for stewards.
Yeah, well. All right. So are we good with that? What do you think, guys?
Good.
All right. So I'm going to ask, is the, can I have a motion to accept the resolution? Motion with a robo, I was going to get there. So let's start off, we'll just go through, a second, sorry, I apologize. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Let's go through it. I'm going to include all alternates in that also. Evan?
Aye. I'm not an alternate tonight.
Aye. That's true.
Aye.
Bill? I'm an aye.
I'm a reluctant aye.
I hear you. Jerry?
No.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, sure. Thank you all. We, we hope this is progressing forward quickly. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Ohioville Solar Special Use Permit and Site Plan, Crow Hill Road. If I can have the applicant come up and speak to the project.
Good evening. My name is Nick Cunha. I'm here with Owen Hooper on behalf of Carson Power. On the line, we have Travis Rosenkrantz, our civil engineer with Creighton Manning, all working on the Ohioville Solar Project on Crow Hill Road. The proposal includes an 11 and 1/2 megawatt DC, 8 megawatt AC, ground-mounted fixed tilt community solar project, providing energy for approximately 1,200 homes to the Central Hudson Distribution Network. 2.7 acres of the project is in Lloyd and the rest of the approximately 40-acre project is in the town of Platicill. It is a permitted land use in A5 District by a special use permit. Currently, the parcel is used as an apple orchard, which will mostly be replaced by the project, the solar project. The project proposes installation of stationary anti-glare solar panels on existing grade with disturbance associated with the construction of the access driveway, equipment pads, electric transiting, construction of stormwater management practices. Access will be on Crow Hill Road via gravel access road with ingress and egress to the public portion of Crow Hill Road. Project will be constructed, owned and operated with a company called Nexamp, which was previewed in the past. They're a national owner, operator and constructor of solar projects. And so what you're seeing in front of you and the proposal will largely be what they will be going to build. Just some history for the board and the public's context. We initially submitted to the town of Platicill in February of this year and have proposed a project in front of the board of Lloyd shortly thereafter in March for secret review and planning board approval. We've worked through a variety of different comments and concerns received by the public in both sets of boards and engineering personnel. Those issues include battery and energy storage, which was initially proposed and since removed, both at the request of the Platicill Town Board, excuse me, Platicill Planning Board, as well as neighbor concerns. Additional concerns brought up by community members that we reached out to and spoke with that, but the property were battery storage, visibility. And so we removed panels on the southwestern portion of the site. What you're looking at right now is the original, and those panels on the southwestern portion of the site have since been peeled back. And then screaming has been put in as well to mitigate those visibility concerns. And then the other concern that was brought up is stormwater management. And as you all know, that's what we worked through with CPL engineering and MHE engineering. We included level spreaders, attenuation basins, several other stormwater features to maintain compliance with New York D.C. Blue Book Guidelines for Stormwater Management. From a county perspective, the, the project went in front of the County, Ulster County Planning Board. Received comments, none of them were of concern. So those have been addressed. We went in front of the State Parks Rec and Historic Preservation with the New York State. And we submitted actually the project twice, once last year in August of '23, and again in May of this year. And both submissions came back with the agency declaring there was no effect on historic properties or resources in the area as a result of this project. From an ag and markets perspective, we submitted an NOI to New York Ag and Markets and they too administered a declaration that there is no adverse effect on farmland due to this project. You know, that's procedural, you need that to go forward if you're in an ag zone district. From an endangered species standpoint, we were flagged for bats and northern cricket frog. We did additional survey work, call surveys for a period of, I want to say five weeks to prove that there is no northern cricket frog in the ponds on site. And then from a bat perspective, as is standard, we're going to be doing winter tree clearing on the property. I would like to note that the only tree clearing on the property will be the orchard trees that are currently, you know, where the southwestern large array is, the portion, the northern portion in the town of Lloyd. And then some of those little subarrays that are kind of at 1 o'clock and 3 o'clock respectively along the access road. The southern portion of the project is already cleared, so we will not be clearing any trees there. But again, this will be winter tree clearing to comply with U.S. Fish and Wildlife standards. And the FAA has also been consulted with and determined no effect of this project as well. Construction of the project is dependent on approval, but it takes approximately six to eight months. It will occur probably, hopefully later this year, early next year in the winter, starting with the tree clearing. Light construction traffic will occur during the six to eight months of construction. And after that, minimal traffic to the site, mowing a couple of times a year. And at max, an average of roughly, you know, one to two pickup trucks to monitor the system per month. But otherwise, it's a pretty dormant site. It'll be all fenced and gated in as requested by both towns. And the fire departments will have access via Knox Box to the site. And they have been consulted in both towns and have approved of the project. From an operations and decommissioning standpoint, as I mentioned, two times, two to three times a year is mowing. And after construction, we'll be planting a native meadow species under the panels. At the end of the project's life, decommissioning will occur for which a bond will be posted with both towns for financial assurance. And then, you know, finally, as a community solar project, what will occur after operations or shortly before is community members will receive a subscription opt-in mailer that allows them to opt into receiving energy from this, this site. And yeah, so that, that's everything. Happy to answer any additional questions the board has, but that, that's the lineage of this project so far.
Has Platicill had their?
Platicill has their public hearing Tuesday, 27th.
That's what I, I remember there was a.
Correct, we're back.
Yeah. So is anyone from staff got a question?
I mean, we've reviewed, we've reviewed it. The only comments we have remaining are stormwater related and most of our most significant comments have been addressed at this point.
Paul, anything? Dave? Anyone from the board?
I just have a question about these recent letters that came in this week from Vanderwater and Vanderwater and the Sarin Goldner. Whether they's been addressed yet or are they being addressed in Platicill?
We have not received them.
You haven't even received them?
No.
Yeah, I got them at like 5:20.
Okay. There are more public comments.
Yeah.
We'll have to address them.
Anyone else? No? Can I have a motion? What?
Can I, just procedurally?
Sure.
You may want to, because you can't make a decision this month anyway, just continue it until next month?
Yes. We, we can. So the public wouldn't have anything to say tonight?
Correct. Oh, yeah, yeah. But I mean, I'm just saying procedurally, if you open the public hearing, you could continue it.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, yes. It's not much we can do until after they do their public hearing and we know what they're voting on, right?
Right.
So, but I, can I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion. Second.
That's great. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Public hearing's open. Anyone from the public like to speak on behalf of the project or against it? Okay, would you come up, state your name, please? And if I could, if you don't mind, I'm just going to put, slay some ground rules, rules down so we're on the same page. So speak your, your case, what you want interest to speak about. And we're, we're not going to really respond. We're going to hear what you have to say and, and go from there, okay? State your name and address.
I'm Sarin Goldner. My physical address or my PO box?
It, you're fine. We got your letter.
Okay. I, I submitted the comments. I don't know that I need to say more about that right now, but I, I did want to try to ensure that it remained open for additional written comments to be submitted because the letter my neighbor received said that the comments had to be provided before tonight, before this meeting. And he's in South Carolina and I know he wanted to submit something, but he's on vacation and the letter came at a time when he couldn't change anything.
That's incorrect. That was incorrect.
Okay.
So, okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to speak on behalf or against the project? Okay, seeing none. We'll keep the public hearing open until next month. And we can get some other information if anybody has something to say. All right? We're good? Gentlemen? You're in a rush. There you go again.
Really not.
Okay. Thank you. I know. Next on the agenda is the short-term rental. We have Caesar Noranho, am I saying it right?
Norano.
Huh?
Norano.
Norano? Are they here tonight?
Oh.
Norano. No? Well, we're not going to speak on, on that project at all. What is that one? Administrative Business is next on the agenda. We have 53 Oaks Road. What is that?
We have the picture.
Pictures? A easty picture? Down by the river, that we were looking to see if they were going to put some parking spots in. I think it's the only way we can see the, see it. They're not here. We're just going to look at the pictures.
No, we are here.
No, they're here.
Oh, they are here.
Oh. Can you hear us?
We can now, yes, sir.
Hey, how are you guys doing?
We're doing good. What's your name?
My name's Majahid. My wife's name is Stephanie.
Hello.
Hello.
So basically, we're, we're here seeking permission to install a three-car gravel parking space on our property. And I don't know if we need permission or not, or if we actually need a permit, but Mr. Anthony told me that we have to appear before the board seeking permission. So we're here today to seek that permission.
We're going to let the building department.
Yeah, so you're actually here for the special use permit for the short-term rental.
Okay.
The board had concerns about parking and some of the photos we have will sort of reflect that. So why don't we let the board go through the photos? And then we'll let you, let you speak to the, where the parking will be. Okay?
Sure.
So this is, I believe, where the parking is intended to be? That sound right? Yeah, so the little stake here. I'm just going to go through them, guys, and this is looking up that hill, where that parking is going to be.
On grade?
Yeah, that's Anthony. That's Mr. Anthony right there. That's a barge. And looking down the hill. And Mr. Anthony. This is the depiction that we were shown. This, that's, Anthony was just standing right here. This is the parking area and this is the slope up to that area. Give me a sec. That's looking, Fred?
Do we know yet what the grade is?
Steve. This is looking down the drive towards Oaks Road, obviously towards the north. This is looking up the hill. This is the house in question right here, where the parking would go up and around. You'll note how tight this is here, and this is quite a, quite a drop. And there's Anthony up the hill. That's Mr. Anthony. If anybody needs me to, I can zoom in on him. He looks grumpy.
I was going to say.
He is disperated constantly. That's why we love him. Some stone up at the top of that hill. Again, back to that, and then Anthony, Mr. Anthony, this is where they park now. The, the house is over here to the right. Mr. Anthony's walking up the hill. I think that's the end of those. I thought we had one. Oh, yes. So a car went off. This was taken by a neighbor. A car went off because anything past the edge of the item four is down the hill. And if you know the river down there, it's down the hill to water. Then it goes up to the rail bed and then down to the river. So these people were evidently relatively lucky that they didn't have a little tumble.
So obviously, grade's going to be an issue for this parking space. Anything else that we can see, gentlemen? I'm going to go there, take a ride. Yeah, I think a road trip is.
Shouldn't we have some engineered plans, like actually showing real grades?
You could, you could ask for that, sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I would think we would need something to, to verify it and put it on paper forever.
This is like a grade. This is a site plan. Basically.
Anything else? Oh, that looks better. Is that a ladder going up to the property?
Yes.
Okay. Where, where's the property line on the, on that sketch?
I don't think there was one.
Wasn't a ladder, was it?
It's the pool.
Yeah, I mean. Can we request that? Yeah, of course. We're going to need, we're going to need a site plan or something on this property to, first to determine the elevation or the, of the grade of the driveway.
By an engineer with a stamp.
PE. We need an engineered stamped print of your property so we know what is happening here. That includes topography and property boundaries. Are you listening? Can you hear us? Hello? I think they quit.
Yeah, can you hear us? I think you guys, yeah, you guys muted us on that other end. That's why you couldn't hear us. Can you hear us now?
Yes, we can hear you now. That's what happened.
Okay, yeah, that's not a ladder. That's actually a staircase. It's a concrete staircase with actually a banister. So I don't know who's, who screwed up and drew a ladder there.
Well, then this is exactly why we need a site plan so that we can determine it professionally what's there.
Drawn by an engineer.
Drawn by an engineer and stamped, if that's possible.
That's, that's not an issue. We'll get to that. But until then, like, like for example, for today, like, obviously we live in Long Island. This is our second vacation home we come once in a while. And where do we park until then? Because there's no neighbors to our left side, there's no neighbors to our right side. But this is a right-of-way, right? And I don't foresee myself falling off the embankment, and even if I do, I have car insurance for that. So, yeah, I mean, I know safety is an issue for everybody, including me and my kids when we come. Could we park in the bottom area for now? There's a public area, but, or else why, why would we be able to be parked?
Well, hold on.
Until we get this written down.
If, if you could give me two seconds, I'll be able to answer some of that for you, okay? First of all, it's a public road down there, if I'm not mistaken. So you don't have the right to park there. You should be parking on your property, okay? We can't give you authorization to park anywhere else but on your property.
Okay. I mean, I understand that. Just, that's for the time being. Like, where do I park? That's my question.
Again, I, I, I'm not, go ahead.
So you can park in front of the house. You personally can park in front of the house. But my understanding that you're continuing to rent, and that is forbidden until a permit has been issued by this board. So there won't be any tenant parking on, on the property at all. Now where you park in front of the house is actually in the right-of-way. So in theory, you could be, if anybody ever used the property beyond you, you could be blocking access for them since the access is so tight. I don't think anybody's accessed that property in many, many years, but for now, you personally can park in front of the house. But there shouldn't be any tenants, any renters in that building.
No, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that, that was a misunderstanding between the property management. Because I thought he, he was under the impression that everything was cleared. He was not aware of the parking, he was not aware of the parking issues that came about. He thought he had a clearance from the time that the CO was issued.
Okay, well, again, I'm going to say I was speaking to the point of the special use permit, Dave, so we're clear on that. So no one can park on that road that, you can't rent the property either since you don't have a permit for it.
Well, that is fully understood now, so.
Yeah.
Well, let me be clear. You own the property. If you want to park in the road and possibly be a detriment to the people in the property beyond you, that's up to you. But you cannot rent that property out as a special use, I'm sorry, as a short-term rental and have anyone park on that road.
Okay, that's fine. That's not an issue. That, that we understood. We were wondering like, could we park? That's what, that's, that was the question. I think you cleared that up for us.
Yeah, and you, you can park there at your own risk to anything that may come about. We, we, we can't give you that permission to do that.
No, I know, I know. I was just trying to figure out because, yeah, I saw the building department, the inspectors email to my wife and I was really confused. Because like, obviously we bought the property, we put a lot of investments in. And, and our neighbors to the right, left, they have, there's dilapidated buildings. There's a lot of health hazards, much worse than the, what we are facing. And my question is, like, I have money to fix these issues. Fine, I'm not allowed to park in, you know? This, this, this was not something that we saw coming. Fine, we have the money to fix it. What if I didn't? You know, why would I be in park? Where, where, where were all these people, the owners previous, or the hundred past years were parking?
You could have come here first.
I saw one of the emails that like, we couldn't even park in the, below where the public area is, even though it's a public area. That's why I was wondering. But if I, if I'm allowed to park in front of my house, I have at least somewhere to park when I come and stay until we get the parking situation fixed. Then we will apply for the permit to short, to do short-term rentals.
Yeah, usually when you apply for permits, they'll give you an outline of what needs to be done and what you're allowed to do there. So I don't know, when you, did you have a permit process? Did you go through and get permits? To do any of the work?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, yeah. This house, I don't know if you guys have been to this block. This block, like, literally, we're the best-looking house in that block. There's people, as I said before, the immediate, to our right, there's no, nobody there. There's no, I, we heard recently, somebody may be coming to, they've been clearing the lot. So we spoke with them through emails to, like, obviously, we would never block there right away. And it to, if he ever stayed overnight, we will let them know. So their trucks could pass by, et cetera. But that has not, yeah.
Okay, that's, it's, it's a long, drawn-out explanation I'm getting here. So here's what, only thing I'm going to explain to you. Please provide the maps that we need so that we can decipher where the parking is going to go and whether it's done to the, to the code, okay? That's-
Yeah, yeah, we will definitely hire, hire, hire somebody to get-
Let me finish. Let, let me finish. So here's what I'm going to do. You give us those maps, we'll re, and reevaluate your application for what you've delivered to us, okay?
Got it.
Got it. Perfect. So with that said, we're pushing you off till you give us some more information and then we can reevaluate. And a stamped map. And we do not want anyone renting that property as a short-term rental. Longer than short-term, I don't care. You're not allowed to rent that property out because you do not have a special use permit. Are we all clear?
But, yeah, but, yeah, but I'm always, yeah, I'm, yeah.
Hold it. I just want to know if we're clear. Yes or no?
Yeah, a hundred percent, a hundred percent. We're not, yeah.
Thank you.
But, but, but we have a question, yeah. Yeah, but my family, my brothers, my extended family, they can come and go as they please, right?
But it's your house, as long as you're not renting it out to them. I don't care.
Exactly. Very good. Not really good understanding. You understand us too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Now, can I have a motion to, good, Jern? Thank you. Second, we don't need it. We're, we're out. Thank you.